Now, we're ready to go. Okay, welcome to the June 12 regular meeting of the Calaveras County Planning Commission, and we'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any staff announcements or agenda changes?
No staff announcements at this time. I'll have a director report at the end. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Then we will open our opportunity for general public comment. Is there anybody here today or online who would like to speak to something not on the agenda today but in the purview of the Planning Commission?
No online.
Okay, now we will close the public comment period and take a look at our consent agenda, which consists of the minutes of previous meetings, March 13th, March 27th, and April 10th. I will need to abstain from the April 10th. I believe I was absent. Are is there anyone on the commission or in the audience who would like to pull an item from the agenda for comments, corrections?
I just want to make sure that it's the corrected meetings for, minutes for April 10th.
They were sent out. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move we adopt the consent column.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. I don't know what we do about my abstention from just one item in there. Do I need to do it separately?
No, I can, I can.
Okay, so let's have a motion on the April 10 minutes.
I'll move. We adopt April 10 minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, and one abstention. And we're ready for our regular agenda. Item 2024-061, general plan amendment and zoning amendment for William Spence. Take it away.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
All right. Your one and only item on the agenda today. Application number 2024-061 is a general plan amendment and zoning amendment for William Spence. So this is a Board of Supervisors-directed application to correct a technical mapping error. The amendments include a general plan amendment to amend the land use designation currently working lands to a commercial designation for the purpose of rezoning the parcel from the current A1 ME, general agriculture, mineral extraction, to C2, general commercial. So the area to be amended is actually occupied by an existing business. The name of the business is Spence Ranch Feed Supply. This is a surveyed area which was found to be the minimum area necessary to create consistency between the general plan, the zoning, and the existing land use. The existing land use consists of a retail feed and farm supply store and accessory structures including hay barns and storage buildings, outdoor storage areas, including the parking lot. The parcel is located at 1235 Highway 49 in Angels Camp, approximately a half mile northwest of the city of Angels Camp boundary. So the area in question equals a total of 150,279 square feet. It's a portion of a larger 18.79 acre parcel shown as Exhibit A on your map. Also known as Parcel B, Record of Survey 2564. This will look a little familiar to you because you've already taken it into consideration once before. This is a 2023 lot line adjustment, if you recall. It was intended to separate out the residents from the business on site in addition to getting the entire business onto one parcel. This is an aerial photo from 2022 illustrating the boundary line that ran through the middle of Spence Ranch Feed. So again, that lot line adjustment, which was approved in 2023, readjusted the boundary lines on this, so this is not the most current depiction of where the boundary lines lie, but that gives you an idea of what the property looks like currently as well. So the intent of this application again is to fix a technical mapping error that we believed occurred in the 2019 general plan update. Again, this is board-directed. July 16, 2024, the Board of Supervisors considered and adopted the Comprehensive Zoning Code update. During that update, it was determined that the uses in the RC zone overlapped with those in C1 and C2, therefore, we all decided to eliminate the RC zone. So knowing that we were eliminating zone districts or based zones, and as you all recall, we also amended some overlay zones, it was necessary to do a zoning map amendment to rezone all of those parcels accordingly. So out of the 37 total parcels we identified as being zoned RC, all of the land uses on site were actually commercial. Every single one of them had a commercial business. I did an extensive research into those parcels and determined that they were all commercially used at the time. Out of the 37 parcels, 36 of those had commercial land use designations, while the parcel owned by Spence Ranch Feed had a working land designation. So at that time, we had no other choice but to zone the parcel A1 ME for consistency with the general plan, since the commercial zoning was not consistent with a working land designation. So unlike the other 36 parcels, the expansion of this parcel now being a legal non-conforming use, expansion of a pre-existing non-conforming use could only occur with approval of a conditional use permit. Unlike the other 36 parcels where the land use was considered and the proper zoning was applied, that then permitted all of the land uses by right. In addition, future uses are limited to those only allowed in the A1 zone on the Spence parcel, where all the other 36 parcels are allowed by right uses in C1 and C2. So just a little history here. In 1986, the county approved a zoning amendment to rezone the subject parcel from its unclassified interim base zone classification to RC and A1 ME. The RC designation covered a 300-foot by 500-foot portion of a larger parcel. That remaining portion of that parcel was zoned A1 ME. At the time, the general plan land use designation was agriculture estates. It was also in the Angels Camp sphere of influence. The only zone district that was actually consistent in the agriculture estates land use designation at the time was A1, but oddly enough, the board made specific findings to approve the RC zone on that portion of land encumbering the feed store. And those findings read as follows, so there were three of them. The first one was that the RC zone was consistent with the grandfathered commercial use existing on the subject parcel, and the subject parcel was developed, and there was an existing parking area meeting the requirements of the zoning code for the approved zone district, and the subject property has illegally existing non-conforming land use, and approved zone change is permitted under the provisions of the Calaveras County General Plan. I think this is significant to understand for the reason that they already designated the use as grandfathered. So if all they wanted to do was grandfather the use, there would have been no need to actually rezone the parcel, but the rezoning of the parcel was intentional, and we believe it was intentional for the purpose of allowing this property the ability to continually use the parcel commercial even after Spence Ranch Feed, you know, wasn't around. So in 2019, we, as you all know, we updated the county general plan, and at that time, the land use map was changed, and this property designation changed to resource production. The zoning of the property stayed the same. We didn't amend the zoning, so it was, it had a split zone district of A1 ME and rural The general plan update process of amending the land use map was very extensive. I personally wasn't involved, but I have been in the office, so I was aware of how we were conducting our analysis and research. So the exercise included identification of all of the zoning and the specific land uses on the properties at the time, and then the appropriate land use designation was applied to the properties to accommodate both the land use and the zoning. I don't know why this particular parcel didn't get tagged, but it was obvious that all of the other properties that were zoned RC did. And for those of you that have been around a while, if you recall, the RC zone was the one zone district that was basically, if you think of the name, rural commercial. It was the intent to allow commercial land use to occur in the rural portions of Calaveras County. The odd thing is, is that they were only allowed in the same land use designations as C1 and C2, so it kind of didn't make any sense. But nevertheless, we had, you know, the 36 parcels that were sprawled throughout the county, and they were adjacent to other residential uses, agricultural uses, and so they were literally out in the rural portions of the county. But they've continued for a long time. They've served their communities with the different commercial uses, and they've been very viable businesses. So in 2023 is when we actually amended the land use designation of this property again through the lot line adjustment application. In order to facilitate that lot line adjustment, we had an issue with the, with the land use designations of resource production and working land. So at that time, without much thinking in advance in terms of what the zoning code update was going to do, just for purposes of facilitating the lot line adjustment so they could alleviate that boundary line going through the business, we allowed the amendment of the land use designation from resource production to working land. It worked great for the lot line adjustment, but it didn't really, didn't do us any favors in terms of what was to come next. So a little bit more history on the property. In 1978, the county issued the first building permit for the construction of the feed store. At that time, the parcel was zoned unclassified. In 1979, the Planning Commission approved a conditional use permit for the expansion of the feed store. Again, the property was still zoned unclassified. In 19, between 1979 and 2011, the county issued numerous additional building permits to include additions to the feed store, hay barns, commercial additions for storage, and then eventually the business owner and land owner's private residence. So this is a depiction of the additional land uses in the particular area surrounding Spence Ranch Feed. It's, we tagged a one-mile radius around, around the feed store and found that there are numerous other uses. So we really found this area to be a mixed-use area. Commercial uses include animal care and boarding services, which happened to be the Angels Camp Vet Hospital. That property is, carries a residential ag zone. I believe they got a use permit back in the day, and the underlying land use designation is a rural transition B. The other animal care and boarding service is the Humane Society, which is just down the road from Spence Ranch Feed. That parcel is designated commercial by the general plan and Zone C2. There are also industrial uses that are along Highway 49 corridor in that area. One of them is Suburban Propane. They actually have approx two 25,000 gallon tanks for which they, they transfer propane to delivery trucks. So that is an adjacent use to Spence Ranch Feed. That parcel is designated by the general plan as commercial and Zone C2. As is Grub Steak Village. That is a personal storage facility, and that's been existing just on the outskirts of the city boundary of Angels Camp. That parcel again is Zone C2 and also carries a commercial land use designation. All the properties in green are actually your working lands and your resource production parcels. Those parcels are all found to be either grazing land with residences or just large lot ag preserves. Those parcels are zoned ag preserve, A1 general ag, in addition to residential ag. The buttery yellow designation down on the bottom of the screen is your rural residential. Those are large lot residential parcels, all zoned RR. And down in the very corner of the screen is kind of a speckly green, and that is Capella Park. That parcel is designated Parks and Recreation and, and actually zoned Recreation. The black dictates the, the boundary of the city of Angels, and as we all know, the city of Angels is a mixed-use community that has everything from commercial, industrial, public uses, as well as residential. So I think you'll, it's very obvious that this is a mixed-use area. These uses have all been in place for a good number of years, and doesn't seem to be any issues with, with what's going on out there. So in terms of our environmental review, we determined that this project is exempt from CEQA under two different exemptions. 15061, which is our common sense exemption, finding no possibility of significant effects on the environment, in addition to exemption 15305, minor alterations of land use. So I'll just kind of run through our findings real quick on that. The approved general plan amendment and zoning amendment will create consistency between the general plan zoning and existing land use, a land use reminding you that has been on the property for 47 years. The rural commercial zone is found, was found by the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors to be similar enough to C1 and C2 to allow the elimination of RC and all of those parcels to be zoned C1 or C2. C2 is the most intense zone permitted in the commercial land use designation, so the uses enumerated in C2, which are similar to those that were in RC, are basically as intense as the property is going to be allowed to be developed unless the general plan is amended once again. The only reason for the zoning to A1 ME again in 2024 was because of the incompatible land use designation with the intended commercial zone. The surveyed area to be redesignated and rezoned is the minimum area necessary to encumber the commercial use and create again that consistency between the general plan, the zoning, and the existing land use. No new development is proposed with this application. It is just simply to clean up what we believe is an error. There will be no increase in residential density as the C2 zone prohibits single unit dwellings, and mixed-use, mixed-use development can only occur with public water and sewer. So my last, my last slide findings and conclusion. So again, we just rolled through the exemptions for the project. The general plan is consistent with the goals, policies, and objectives of the general plan. General plan goal LU1 encourages mixed-use development, including residential, commercial, visitor-serving, and job-generating uses in existing communities. After 47 years, the Spence Ranch Feed Supply Store remains an economically viable business employing up to 12 people continually. The store has been a critical resource for our agricultural community, which has been a sustainable industry in Calaveras County for decades. The general plan implementation measure PF2D allows the Environmental Management Agency to exempt requirements for public water and sewer in the commercial land use designation when it's not feasible, when it's not feasible to connect. The parcel has been adequately served by on-site well and an approved on-site wastewater system since they opened. Connecting to public services is infeasible as it would require annexation into the city and installation of approximately a half mile of infrastructure to connect. The proposed zoning is consistent with the general plan as the C2 zone implements the commercial land use designation. The project is in the public interest as it is not a controversial project. This specific matter was discussed in a public hearing during the Board of Supervisors' discussion over the zoning code update. No public comment was made at that time. The application and notice of public hearing was circulated with no comments received. We did commence a 90-day tribal consultation, which resulted in no comments. The area to be amended is the minimum area necessary to encumber the existing use and has safe and adequate access to the parcel. The C2 zone will allow the property to continue to serve the public for years to come. The project will not adversely affect the surrounding properties. As previously indicated, land use varies within a one-mile radius, including large acreage agricultural uses, large lot residential, commercial, industrial, and the mixed land use in the city of Angels. And again, there's been no public opposition. The project promotes public health and safety and the general welfare of services and goals and purposes of the, of Title 17. The general plan has been evaluated and determined not to be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare, and serves the purposes of Title 17. The purpose of the rezone is to establish consistency with the existing land use that has been taking place for 47 years. The purpose of the rezone is to establish consistency. Sorry, just read that. That actually concludes my presentation. Our recommendation to you is that you recommend to the board approval of both the general plan amendment for the purpose of rezoning. Again, during the general plan or the zoning code update, it was board direction to zone the parcel C2 specifically. So we are just carrying out the application. If you find that all of our findings are in place, then I suppose we shall proceed. So that is my presentation for the day. If you have any further questions, I am here to answer, as well as the business and land owner and their agent are here as well, if you have any specific questions of them. Is there anything the land owner would like to add?
I do have, I do have a couple of clarifying.
I'm asking the public first, then you can ask your questions to them or to, you know, just one minute. Is there anyone else who would like to say anything? Great. Anybody online?
No online.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll close the public comment portion and entertain questions from the commission.
Well, first, I just have to compliment you on the thoroughness of both your presentation today and in the, in the written materials, which are educational to me in many respects. There's one thing in your presentation today that I found absolutely shocking, and that is the hypothetical that Spence Ranch and Feed Supply, Feed and Supply could cease to exist at some point. That, that's a concept.
I hope not.
Yes, that's a concept that never occurred to me. What I, I just want to make sure I've got it straight, that you can have a different land use designation and different zoning designations within one parcel?
Yes, so, so there's, I have to admit, it's a bit sloppy in that our GIS, since all of our, since our general plan and our zoning official maps are now on GIS, unlike the old days, our GIS guys actually have to create a separate, a separate map overlay, GIS overlay to show the, the split designation of the, of the area that is, you know, zoned and designated differently, but it can be done, and there's nothing in, in the law that prohibits us from doing this. And it's my understanding that it's a pretty common practice in other jurisdictions as well. And we actually have a lot of split zoning still and split land use designations existing in the county, so this is not the only one. It's not ideal, you know, we like to avoid it when at all possible, but in this particular case, we feel that it's necessary.
And here, we have assessor's parcels that are basically irrelevant.
Correct.
That the Record of Survey actually created a parcel that is the parcel.
Yes.
A portion of that parcel that we're dealing with today.
Yeah, so a little, a little background on how, on how all that works. So, so the lot line adjustment, the Record of Survey was recorded upon recordation. That map gets sent over to the assessor's office, and then they have to proceed with applying new assessor parcels to the new parcels, to the newly created parcels through the Record of Survey. That hasn't taken place yet, so in the interim, we just refer to the original APNs, and in this case, there are portions of those two APNs, and that's why we put so much emphasis on the noting, the reference of that Record of Survey being, you know, Parcel B, a portion of Parcel B of that Record of Survey.
So eventually.
Eventually, we'll catch up, and, and, and the new mapping will be in place for the assessor's office as well as GIS, and new assessor parcels will be applied to the new, to the newly configured parcels.
And the, did the lot line adjustment create this Record of Survey parcel, or was it carved out of?
Well, we didn't create an additional parcel. We, we adjusted the, the existing boundaries of the parcels.
Of the Record of Survey.
The Record of Survey adjusted the boundaries of existing legal parcels.
Which were not assessor's parcels.
They just haven't been assigned yet.
Right.
That was my question is why?
When?
We have.
Yeah.
Not my department.
No, no.
I know.
But thank you for the education. Now, and as I understand, the notice of exemption is needed for both the rezoning and the general plan amendment. And as we see on our desk, I'm proposing some fine tuning to the notice of exemption.
Yes.
And, oh, and another bit of education. The reason that there would have to be an annexation in order to bring public water to it is that the, the water surface is limited to the city limits of Angels Camp?
Correct. Yes.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all the education.
That's a lot of pipe.
Yes, indeed.
And just to be clear, we didn't consult with the, with the city about that annexation. It was obvious to us that it wasn't going to be feasible, and since the, the property had been served since its opening by well and onsite wastewater, or, yeah, onsite wastewater system, it was really unreasonable to assume that they would have to annex in.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Anything else? Would we like Gina to read us the recommendation with the amendment? Has everybody had a chance to look at the language modifications that Commissioner Ladish is suggesting? It's basically taking care of the categorical exemption in both sections and doing a slight, not rename exactly, but description change to make it clear.
I worked on it. Yeah, so-
Do we actually have, officially have an applicant?
Oh.
No, there's Mr. Spence.
I think I gave my copy away. If you guys have.
I've got some.
It's available to the public.
Oh, yeah, if that could be displayed on the screen.
Um, I can.
And staff has taken a look at the edits, and I don't think, unless Gina has a different opinion, I don't think we have any-
You got it?
Yep.
Heartburn in making those changes.
I, I have no issues with that. As a matter of fact, I, I appreciate it because we did, in fact, overlook the, the reference to the zoning amendment in the title. So, yeah, I don't have, I've got no issues with the proposed changes. I actually think it makes it better, so thank you. So I can, if everyone's in agreeance, I can roll, roll in those amendments to the, to the notice of exemption, and so the, the revised updated NOE will be posted for the board on their, for their consideration. Did we have any changes to the resolution?
I do have some suggestions.
Go ahead.
Personally, I think with the, the resolution ought to have as exhibits not only the, the illustration of the property involved, but actually have the notice of exemption that we're asking the board to approve as an exhibit. And so most of my suggestions have to do with, with making that happen. So on-
You mean you want the notice of exemption as an exhibit to the resolution?
Yeah, that's what I was going to suggest.
It's already an attachment.
Well, no, it's an attachment to the, to the staff report.
Yeah, I mean, we, that's never been included-
Okay.
-ever as an attachment.
Yeah, I've, I've never seen any jurisdiction do that to a resolution.
Okay, so-
I mean, it's part of the staff report package that you're reviewing.
It is a package that goes, okay.
So it's, it's-
Right, it's noted in the staff report as an exhibit. It'll get, it'll get filed with the state, it'll get filed here locally.
Okay.
And it'll always be part of the record. I think the findings that are made in, in the resolution are sufficient.
Then that simplifies what I was about to suggest. The, in the first resolution on the be it therefore resolved paragraph, the, we don't specifically say that we recommend approval of the notice of exemption there, even though we do in the title. So I'd suggest that it be changed to be it therefore resolved, that the planning commission recommends approval of the general plan amendment and the notice of exemption based upon the following findings.
I mean, I think that's fine. It's down below as well, and it's in the, it's in the lead-up as well to it, but we can add that.
Since that's the recommendation paragraph, I thought it'd be good. Couple of what I think are typos on the-
What?
Yeah. You have to keep it-
I blame the computer.
Of course. On page three of the first resolution at the very top, the word employees, just, it's obviously supposed to be employees, so the double E can take an S. And yes, I bet you your computer did that. And under, under the evidence section at the bottom of page three, let's see, one, two, three, four, five lines down, starts with the Spence family resulted in no opposing input. And your computer is very imaginative to come up with the input.
It only can read my mind.
Yeah.
Maybe that's a good thing it doesn't.
That's it for that resolution. On the second resolution, the title, a resolution recommending the board of supervisors approve the notice of exemption and, somebody met amendment?
Basically the same edit.
Same thing, right?
Yeah, right. And, and again, the same change.
Under, under be it therefore resolved.
Yeah, be it therefore resolved to put in the, and the notice of exemption. And your computer was more friendly. There, that's, that's what I have.
If none, are you ready for the recommendation? Okay, there's three of them. Staff recommends the planning commission take the following action. Recommend the board of supervisors approve notice of exemption, finding that the project is exempt from CEQA pursuant to 15305 and 15601B3. You want all of them?
Yeah, one too.
Okay.
I don't think there's going to be a problem.
Recommended board of supervisors, recommend the board of supervisors amend general plan, amend the general plan land use designation of the 150, 150,279 square foot portion of land shown on Exhibit A, currently occupied by the retail business Spence Ranch Feed and Supply, located within the 18.79 acre parcel described as parcel B of record of survey 2564, from working lands to commercial by approving resolution 25007. Recommended the board of supervisors adopt the zoning amendment map, or map amendment, amending the base zone of the 150,279 square foot portion of land shown on Exhibit A, currently occupied by the retail business Spence Ranch Feed and Supply, located within the 18.79 acre parcel described as parcel B of record of survey 2564, from A1 ME, general agriculture mineral extraction, to C2, general commercial by approving resolution 2025-008.
Thank you. That's a lot of reading. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve all three recommendations and the resolutions as amended.
Thank you.
And the notice of exemption as amended.
And a second?
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None, so passes 500.
Thank you.
And finally.
Did we do a general public comment?
We did.
Oh, sorry, I was blowing my mind.
You were not paying attention to everything I said.
It's insulting.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
It will go to the board of supervisors on?
I don't remember. Patty knows.
They'll let you know.
I think I'm trying to get it on for the, I think it's the first meeting in July.
I believe that's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, I can't remember a time when Spence wasn't there. I moved here the year after it was built. I didn't realize it. It seemed well-established then. So, okay, informational items, looks like none, and does, do any of our commissioners have a report they want to share?
No.
I've done nothing of interest to the public. But our planning director has something to share.
I, I just wanted to call your attention to the fact that we should be having a meeting on June 26th, the next regular scheduled meeting. There should be one project on the agenda coming your way. It would be Project 2023-008, which is a modification to a tentative subdivision map. It's a project that's down in, near the Copper Valley Town Square, and the applicants are proposing a townhome product, which is a slight modification to the approved housing product that they had prior. So it's a modification to that map, and you should be seeing that on the 26th. That's all I have.
So we are adjourned at 9:43. Good job, everybody.
Almost took a hundred to drive here.
Nice to see everyone.